Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the December fourteenth meeting of Florissant City Council. As we begin, the seat man would ask that Mr. Justin Smith of Troop 942 out of St. Andrews Church come up and lead the council and the audience in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Justin. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Schmidt?
Here.
Syam?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Egan?
Here.
Capuda?
Here.
Shuldorff?
Here.
Henke?
Here.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. Item number three. Mr. Syam makes a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen meeting that is seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The minutes shall be approved. Item number four. Certificates of recognition, Your Honor.
Before we begin this section of the program, I want to congratulate our police department for the high praise that they received a week ago when we had the CLIA public hearing. I'd like to thank all those citizens that testified. We had a variety of people speaking in behalf of our police department to the CLIA officials that were here for our accreditation. There was very high praise from many different segments of this community, from educators, from other police departments in the area, from fire department, from youth leaders, and it was a very diverse and very complimentary group. Congratulations, Chief, on a job well done by you and your department.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much.
Turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I do want to thank the Mayor and the City Council for the support of the police department. And like the Mayor said last week in this room, we were very humbled by the nice things that our citizens and our residents had to say about, and business people had to say about, our police department. And that carried on in that I'm sure that we're going to get recertified as a CLIA gold standard department. I do want to thank Captain Bowden, who has really highlighted that, and he put that all together, and we really appreciate what he did. And then tonight, we're here to honor eleven of our officers, two citizens, and one of our K-9 dogs, and on eight separate incidents that happened within the city limits of Florissant the last four months. And these gentlemen do just outstanding police work, and their loyalty and dedication to the police department, our citizens, and our business people. And so we're here to honor these officers tonight with commendations. And our two citizens who did just outstanding work, you'll hear about it in a minute, assisting our officers on two separate incidents, that we really appreciate what our citizens did to assist us with these investigations. Thank you.
Our first certificate of recognition will be to Mr. Lawrence Washington. On Thursday, July twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, Officer McCarrick was in the process of detaining a shoplifting suspect from the Flower Valley Shopping Center when the prisoners suddenly broke free and ran. Mr. Lawrence Washington witnessed the escaping suspect and immediately took action by chasing the suspect and tackling him to the ground. Mr. Washington restrained the suspect until Officer McCarrick was able to take custody of suspect. Mr. Washington's actions exemplify civic duty and courage to keep the city of Florissant a safe place to live. The Florissant Police Department wishes to officially commend Mr. Lawrence Washington for his swift action and invaluable assistance. The second certificate of recognition goes to Mr. Adam Matthews. On Saturday, August first, two thousand and fifteen, Mr. Adam Matthews observed a male subject accompanied by a young child enter his place of work. Mr. Matthews' observations and interactions with this individual create a suspicious feeling regarding this adult. Because of the information he was able to obtain from the male, he initiated an online search and discovered that the male was a suspect in a parental abduction in Cook County, Illinois. Mr. Matthews immediately contacted Officer Easton with the information. Because of his actions, the suspect was arrested, and the child was returned to his biological mother after five years of absence. The Florissant Police Department wishes to formally commend Mr. Adam Matthews for his invaluable assistance. The first commendation goes to Officer Chris Easton. On Saturday, August first, two thousand and fifteen, Officer Chris Easton was contacted by Mr. Matthews, who advised him of suspicious male suspect and entered his place of business with a young child. When Mr. Matthews advised Officer Easton of his suspicions that the subject may be a suspect in parental abduction in Illinois, Officer Easton made a quick and thorough follow-up investigation. Officer Easton's immediate attention to this investigation resulted in the verification of the crime, location of the suspect, and successful arrest. Because of Officer Easton's immediate actions, the child was returned to his biological mother after five years of absence. The Florissant Police Department wishes to formally commend Officer Easton for his thorough investigation. The next commendation goes to Officer Michael Arthur and K-9 Hugo. On June eighteenth and July tenth, two thousand and fifteen, Officer Michael Arthur and his K-9 partner Hugo assisted the United States Postal Inspector's Office with narcotics searches. Their efforts resulted in search warrants being issued on three different packages, which led to a seizure of nineteen pounds of marijuana and seventy thousand dollars in U.S. currency. Officer Arthur and his K-9 partner were hereby formally commended for their professional conduct and the removal of dangerous drugs and their profits from the streets of Florissant. Officers Nicholas Osmer and Kyle Feldman. On June twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, while on routine patrol, Officer Nicholas Osmer observed a vehicle in several residential areas that led him to believe, based on his experience, that the occupants were suspicious in nature. When he observed the vehicle commit a traffic violation, he executed a stop, assisted by Officer Kyle Feldman. During the traffic stop, both officers observed that the passenger was visibly shaking. Although he gave a fake name, their investigative skills led them to discover his real identity and the fact that he was wanted by three other jurisdictions for burglary. The suspect was arrested and later confessed to a dozen different burglaries in the surrounding jurisdictions. Because of their excellent patrol techniques and investigative skills, Officer Osmer and Feldman cleared numerous burglaries and removed habitual felon from the streets of Florissant. For their excellent police work, they are hereby formally commended. Detective Tony Moka and Detective Joe Monahan. On August second, two thousand and fifteen, Detectives Tony Moka and Joe Monahan were assigned to assign the investigation of a serious domestic assault first degree where a thirty-six-year-old victim had her throat cut and she was stabbed in the chest. Their investigation led to the development of a suspect, her ex-boyfriend. As part of their investigation, they conducted a surveillance of the suspect's father's residence and observed his girlfriend visit the residence. She, when she left, she followed her to the bar in Alton, Illinois. With the assistance of the Alton Police, the detectives were able to enter the bar, locate the suspect, and take him into custody. After a lengthy interview of the suspect, the detectives secured videotaped confessions. Warrants were issued on the suspect for assault first degree, serious physical injury, and armed criminal action. For their excellent investigative techniques, interviewing skills, and professional handling of this investigation, these detectives were hereby officially commended. Officer Brian Bussin. On August eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, Officer Brian Bussin was on routine patrol when he noticed a stranded female motorist with a flat tire. Officer Bussin took initiative to stop in the pouring rain and retrieve the spare, jack up the car, and change her flat tire in spite of the inclement weather. His personal initiative to assist the stranded motorist certainly encouraged police community involvement in a positive way. Officer Bussin is officially commended for his professional conduct. Officer Ryan McCarrick. On August twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, Officer Ryan McCarrick was directed to a burglary second report in the sixteen-hundred block of Saddle Spur Lane. He obtained all of the information that included possible suspect. On October fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, he was directed to a robbery second report, also in the sixteen-hundred block of Saddle Spur Lane. While investigating this crime, he also gained information regarding suspect, which included a possible first name. Through Officer McCarrick's diligence, he was able to determine that both crimes were committed by the same individual. His follow-up investigation of the crimes led to the arrest of the suspect and obtaining a full confession on both crimes. Because of his excellent police work and professional handling of these criminal offenses that resulted in removal of a dangerous criminal from the streets of Florissant, he is formally commended. Officer DeWitt Edwards and Detective Jared Coder. On August twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, Officer Edwards and Detective Coder were working a security detail at St. Sabina Church. Their attention was directed to a disturbance. While they were addressing the disturbance, it became necessary to arrest one of the persons involved when he refused to leave. As Officer Edwards and Detective Coder were in the process of arresting the subject, the subject suddenly fled, and they both gave chase. During the chase, citizens started yelling, "He has a gun." When the officers caught up to the suspect, they were able to disarm and arrest him without injury to the officer or the public. The efforts of these two officers resulted in taking a dangerous armed felon off the streets of Florissant. Because of their professional handling of this dangerous situation and their heroic actions, Officer Edwards and Detective Coder are hereby formally commended. Officer Mark Nardoni. On September ninth, two thousand and fifteen, Officer Mark Nardoni received information regarding location of a suspect that was wanted for robbery, weapons charges, and felony probation violation within the city of Florissant. With this information, he was able to locate and arrest the subject at a local motel. As he continued his investigation, he was able to seize various quantities of narcotics and stolen firearm. This arrest led to the arrest of a second dangerous suspect. For his diligent patrol efforts, professional investigative techniques, and observations, two violent criminals were taken off the streets of Florissant, and Officer Nardoni is hereby formally commended. Can we get one more round of applause for these officers?
I know that I, for one, would not want to be tackled by Mr. Washington. All right, let's move along. Next item on the agenda is hearing from citizens. If you would like to make a comment at this evening's hearing from citizens portion of the meeting, I would ask that you complete a yellow speakers card. They're located on the table next to the entrance to the chamber. Each citizen will have three minutes to make whatever statement they so desire to the council. This is not a question-answer period. If you have a specific question you'd answer, see myself, the councilman, one of your councilmen or the mayor after the end of the meeting. Gina Walsh. Ms. Walsh, and in your case, I believe you're in my, this concerns my award, and I will see you afterwards, ma'am. But, no, no, so go ahead and state your name and your address for the record, please, and then you may begin. Please speak really loud.
I'm going to try to talk slow to you. I talk a lot, but not in front of groups. My name's Gina Walsh, and I live at nine forty-nine Charbonneer Road. And I wanted to talk about a piece of sidewalk that runs on Charbonneer. I've lived right on Charbonneer for a little over four years now, and on the north side, or no, I'm sorry, not on the north side, but on my side, which is on the same side as Bedwood Nursing Home, there is a sidewalk, and it's continuous from Shackelford all the way down to Limburg. On the opposite side, it starts at Shackelford, but then it stops at Norrington Court, and then it doesn't pick up again till Rosetta, right there by the apartments. I have children, I've witnessed a lot of traffic, it's growing, I love it, we have a lot of new families moving in, the children have increased over the four years I've been there. But my question is, I would like to find out, and I don't know if the funds would come from the Proposition S that we just passed or other funds, but I wanted to find out how much it would be and what we could do to put a piece of sidewalk in there. Two weeks ago today, as I was out running around about five-thirty at night, a gentleman who's a handicapped resident was crossing right there at Sunridge, where his sister lives, who's lived there for fifteen years. He resides at Bedwood Nursing Home, he's in a motorized wheelchair, that is his transportation. It gets dark earlier now because of winter, a lot of traffic coming off of Limburg that way, but he was struck accidentally by a vehicle, and I just thought that if we could get that piece of sidewalk, which I know that has to do with Florissant, it would be amazing. I've watched a gentleman with small children walk in his children to Lawson in a stroller on that two-foot piece of stretch there. I have emailed and talked to some other folks, and I'm sorry, I don't have it to you guys yet, I've been in and out of Jeff City and working, but I will email each of you this week. I'm waiting to get a letter of support from Representative English, Senator Walsh, and Representative McNeil, who are in support of that. And I wanted to talk to Mr. O'Meara from the county to see what it would take to maybe get one of those triggered lights. We have one up by Lawson, and that will completely stop the traffic. We have a lot of pedestrians that catch the bus on that little shoulder a little bit. So that is what I'm here for, and to find out what we can do to maybe immediately chuck into it and see as the winter's coming and see what it would be about.
Ms. Walsh, that's in my award. I do have your email address and your phone number. You'll hear from me tomorrow. If you want to stick around to the end of the meeting, I'll speak with you after the meeting tonight, or I'll personally call you tomorrow.
Definitely.
Thank you very much for coming.
Merry Christmas, and thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming. Mr. Engelmeier, if you'll state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. John Engelmeier, twelve eighty-one Graham Road. Once again, I will speak on several issues tonight. Three minutes is a lot of time. This is not a question or answer period, so I'll begin with the discussion. I would discuss the use of the funds for the lobbyists with a nonpartisan form of government. Our lobbyist is Tim Green, who used to be a Democratic representative and senator from this area. We also have Democrat Gina Walsh, and we also have a Democratic representative, Keith English. That's supposed to be nonpartisan, but it looks like we've rallied behind the Democratic Party within this city. Second item I have is police standards of St. Louis County, which is on the agenda tonight. I'm hoping that Chief Lowery will be here to explain. I've read the bill. Michael O'Meara supported it, the county councilman from this area, who's also Democratic. And he supports the guidelines, the new guidelines. I looked at the guidelines, we by far, in my opinion, saw no real distinction between what we have here with the excellence of our police force, as was acknowledged earlier in the meeting. The monthly operating statement, although it's a courtesy to post it online, this month's operating statement was enjoined two months together. In the many years that it's posted on here, there's never been one, one operating statement where it's combined a September and October period. There's no clear delineation between the September expenses and October expenses, and I can't find a reason why this council sits there and accepts this from the administration without a complete breakdown. It may be a courtesy to me, but to you, I think it's a disservice. You are representing the citizens. That's that. Whether or not you will respond to my questions, I will then begin, again, requesting documents per the Missouri Sunshine Law. I went to the Board of Elections Commission, and I went to the Florissant for Safe Streets Committee reports. In doing so, the committee report of reporting forms, now that committee is disengaging the opportunity of reporting. Out of this, and I know I received three mailings at home, a hundred and ninety-six dollars was spent on postage. And again, I, for the whole entire city, to spend a hundred and ninety-six dollars, I found it to be quite shocking, because I'd like to do a mailing to the entire city for a hundred and ninety-six dollars if that's the case. Hundred and ninety-six dollars on October twenty-sixth, in the U.S. Post Office, twenty-two-hundred North Limburg. So at this point here, something does not sound right.
Thank you, Mr. Engelmeier. Thank you. Your three minutes has expired.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Egan.
Kevin O'Donnell.
Merry Christmas to all of you, and have a good night.
Good evening, Mr. O'Donnell. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
I'm Kevin O'Donnell, five twelve Ranch O'Lane. First of all, I'd like to say that it was three weeks ago, we had the, or two weeks ago, we had the house tour, the Florissant Old Town Partnership House Tour. It seemed to be a success, but I didn't, I haven't heard anything about the final numbers or anything on it, but I was at one residence, a historic residence, and it was, it seemed to have a good turnout in Ward Six. I was surprised that I didn't see any council, anybody from the city here at all, unless they just avoided the house that I was at. My point was, what I came to talk about was, I was reading the minutes from the last meeting, and it says Kevin O'Donnell, five twelve Ranch O'Lane stated that he supported Representative English in regards to his lawsuit. Also, he remembered that Mr. English had announced that he had cancer when he was a councilman at Ward Four. Here we go again. I don't know if it's censorship, or just intentionally leaving out important parts of my statement, but the main statement that I was bringing up is that Mr. English did raise, he did, he raised awareness of prostate cancer at Seitman Cancer Hospital. He made, he did a fundraiser for the hospital. He also did, he got the Florissant male city employees free prostate screenings, and all male residents in Florissant prostate screenings. That isn't listed, is what I said in the minutes. But I guess we had to just cut it short and get, make it short and sweet, but it's just like the communications, nothing's ever, ever brought up. But that's mainly what I wanted to speak about this evening, and I think that hopefully we'll have a mild December, and I hope you all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Good evening, Ms. Motan. If you will state your name and your address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Good evening. My name is Abir Motan, and I am set up to be homeless by members in the city of Florissant and other people who are racketeering in the government. I also represent Global Bridge to the Future Fusion for Life Foundation, and I am Arab, and I am Muslim. First of all, I want to let you know, Mr. Thomas Schneider, Tommy Siam looks exactly like my ex-husband, and he looks like you, so evidently you and I are conflicts of interest in this whole thing. Your people, the previous mayor, his name was Robert Lowery, that mayor had his people with the chief of police, Lowery, to give people, to give to me, to set me up with cocaine, so that I can take cocaine. I have a property at one fifteen Deer Hackey Road. That's my property. You have your people in there. I'm going to get it back. Your people, when I go to the America's Job Center, they try to make me look like I steal, they hurt my friend, they put bugs on us, they try to make us, to set us up for entrapment. The police are there in the MetroLink, they have people who smoke marijuana to try to get us hurt. There's, they also set me up with marijuana from Chief Lowery's family, who set me up, and he's got family over in Shrewsbury. I want to know something. Where is the justice? Evidently, you have so many members... In doing so, the committee report of, uh, reporting forms, now that committee is disengaging the opportunity of, uh, reporting. Out of this, and I know I received three mailings at home, $196 was spent on postage. And, again, I, for the whole entire city to spend $196, I found it to be quite shocking, because I'd like to do a mailing to the entire city for $196 if that's the case. $196 on October 26th, at the US Post Office, 2200 North Limburg. So at this point here, something does not sound right.
Thank you, Mr. Engelmeier.
Sir?
Thank you, your three minutes has expired.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Egan.
Kevin, Kevin O'Donnell.
Merry Christmas to all of you, and have a good night.
Good evening, Mr. O'Donnell, if you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
I'm Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that, uh, it was, uh, three weeks ago, we had the, or two weeks ago, we had the house tour, the Florissant Old Town Partnership House Tour. It seemed to be a success, but I didn't, I didn't, I haven't heard anything about the final numbers or anything on it, but it's, but I was at one, one residence, a historic residence, and, uh, it was, it seemed to have a good turnout in Ward 6. I was surprised that I didn't see any council, anybody from the city here at all, unless they just avoided the house that I was at. My point was, what I came to talk about was, I was reading the minutes from the last meeting, and it says Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane stated that he supported Representative English in regards to his lawsuit. Also, he remembered that Mr. English had announced that he had cancer when he was a councilman at Ward 4. Here we go again, uh, I don't know if it's censorship, or that just purposely leaving out important doc, important parts of my statement, but the main statement that I was bringing up is that Mr. English did raise, he did, um, he raised awareness of prostate cancer at Seitman Cancer Hospital, he got, he made it, made a, he did a fundraiser for the hospital, he also did, uh, he got the Florissant male city employees free prostate screenings and all male residents in Florissant prostate screenings. That isn't listed, is what I said in the, in the minutes. But I, I guess we had to just cut it short and get, make it short and sweet, but it's just like the communications, nothing's ever, ever brought up. But that's mainly what I wanted to speak about this evening, and, uh, I think that, hopefully, we'll have a, a mild December, and I hope you all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Abir Motan. Good evening, Ms. Motan.
Good evening.
If you will state your name and your address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Good evening, my name is Abir Motan, and I am set up to be homeless by members in the city of Florissant and other people who are racketeering in the government. I also represent Global Bridge to the Future Fusion for Life Foundation, and I am Arab, and I am Muslim. First of all, I want to let you know, Mr. Thomas Schneider, Tommy Siam looks exactly like my ex-husband, and he looks like you, so evidently you and I are conflicts of interest in this whole thing. Your people, the previous mayor, his name was Robert Lowery, that mayor had his people with the chief of police, Lowery, to give people, to give to me, to set me up with cocaine, so that I can take cocaine. I have a property at 115 Deer Hackey Road, that's my property, you have your people in there, I'm going to get it back. Your people, when I go to the America's Job Center, they try to make me look like I steal, they hurt my friend, they put bugs on us, they try to make us, to, to set us up for entrapment, the police are there in the MetroLink, they have people who smoke marijuana to try to get us hurt, there's, uh, they also set me up with marijuana from Chief Lowery's family who set me up, and he's got family over in Shrewsbury. I want to know something, where is the justice? Evidently, you have so many members acting as cops and on the council, where is the justice when they're all, you're all connected, you're all conflicts of interest, where is the justice when you all come from the same yoke bondage? It's not fair of what you all do. You guys might fool a lot of people, and you probably brainwash a lot of people, and you threaten a lot of people, but you cannot do extortion on me. You have labor trafficked me, you have not paid me for labor trafficking me, you're involved in human trafficking, sex, and fraudulent in vitro fertilizations, shame on you, anybody can put up an act, tell their associates, well, here, cause, let's, let's look, let's look like we're doing a good job, you're not. I want, I want accountability here. I don't want no fake act, just to try to shut people up, you're corrupt. Now, I want to get paid, I worked hard. You worked me for Ava Jordan, and Ava Jordan's related to Schneider, um, Mayor Schneider. Mayor Schneider, the people before you set the whole council up and arranged everything, even Mr. Henderson, who was before Siam, is also inside. I am a human being, don't set me up to be a target, don't even set me up to be a stray or an outcast, we're not, I'm not stupid, I'm not ignorant. You all set me up for entrapment, and shame on you, shame on your people trying to cover, sacrifice me to help other people, it's about time you heard this from me. I want my house, and then, don't have your people try to stop me from doing that Global Bridge Future, uh, Future Fusion for Life Foundation shelter, none of you will be in it, okay? Because all of you are corrupt, it's all in the family, and then your Public Works guy, he put bills on my house.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, have a good night, ma'am, thank you very Next item on the agenda, communication, and there is none. Item number eight, public hearings. I will reopen, 1510-025 reopen, uh, this public hearing that's been postponed twice, I believe. Ms. Pagano?
Yes, I, um, I moved to close this public hearing, we have not heard from him, and I think we've given him ample enough time to answer some questions, but I have not heard from him, the city clerk has not heard from him, so I moved to close.
I would, I would suggest, before we, we take that motion, we allow anyone in the audience, that what may have came to speak tonight about this public hearing, if you would like to do that, now is the time to talk about the public hearing for Rubio's Fresh Mexican Grill. Seeing none, Ms. Pagano has made the motion to close the public hearing, that is seconded by Mr. Hinkie, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the public hearing shall be closed. Public hearing 15-11-027, I will reopen that public hearing, which was postponed from the last meeting. The petitioner, this Mr. LaShay has informed me, informed me very late this evening, that he does not anticipate going forward with this project, however, since I don't have anything in writing, we will let the public hearing continue, so there, if there's anyone who is interested in commenting at this time on the Glory to God Kingdom Fellowship Hall Church and Daycare Center, now is the opportunity to do so. Seeing none, I will move to postpone the public hearing, that is seconded by Mr. Jones, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the meeting will be postponed until January the 11th of 2016. Item number nine, old business, second readings. Bill 9144, Mr. Shildroth makes a motion for a second reading, that is seconded by Mr. Siam, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill for a second time.
Ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of Florissant, Missouri, for their approval at the general municipal election to be held on, in the city on the 5th of April 2016, a proposition to authorize the city to continue applying and collecting the local sales tax on titling of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors that were purchased from a source other than licensed to Missouri dealer.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Kaputa, is there any discussion? All in favor of a third reading? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill for a third time.
Ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of Florissant, Missouri, their, for their approval at the general municipal election to be held in the city on the 5th day of April 2016, a proposition to authorize the city to continue applying and collecting the local sales tax on the titling of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors that were purchased from a source other than licensed Missouri dealer.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Good evening, sir, if you'd be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record, I appreciate it. You may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Egan, John Engelmeier, 1281 Graham Road. On this particular bill, 9144, it addresses the sales tax on motor vehicles, the last day of turning anything on the ballot is on January 19th, from the city to certify the ballot by January 26th at 5:00 PM. On this issue here, I know it's going on the April ballot, but also at the same time, I'd like to see the city's permits and licenses raised, I'm a businessman in the city of Florissant, I think the fee that I'm charged by the city is reasonable, but not justifiable, it should be raised. Business licenses have not been challenged or raised at all for many, many, many years. I'm also a landlord, I pay a license fee to be a landlord, it's $15. The cost of administration of that letter is abominable, it is just absolutely unrealistic. The fees ought to be raised to a justifiable amount, and me, as a landlord, speaking on behalf of myself, $50 to me is not that outrageous. I think we deserve it as a citizen, and I am a citizen, as well as a landlord and a businessman, why don't we raise our business licenses? Because is it the Chamber of Commerce that you're afraid of, or is it the businesses that we're afraid of? I'm saying that, I think Ms. Pagano sits on the Renters Subcommittee, that fee ought to be raised $50. I think the, the business licenses, and we don't have a Subcommittee set up for that, ought to be raised, deal with it. All the expenses have gone up, the citizens have chuffed up to the plate, and they've been paying their share. Business licenses is an opportunity to do businesses within the city. I doubt serious if anybody's going to have any discussion on this, but again, that's why I gave you the dates. You can offer another bill by July 19th, and have it submitted to St. Louis County, so it goes on the ballot for April. Let the citizens voice their opinion. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make comment on this bill that's on the And your name and address for the record, sir?
My name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Florissant, Missouri, 63031. Okay, I was, I came before the council on August 17th, I believe it was, earlier this year, and I asked about how much it's going to cost to put Prop S, which we didn't even, wasn't even given a name for it back then, I asked how much that election was going to cost, $8,000, $20,000, nobody knew. Well, we found out that it wasn't 35, it was like $44,500. And I asked more than once, why couldn't we put Prop S on the April ballot? And I was told, there's nothing, the city of Florissant has no, no, uh, issues on the ballot in 2016, okay? And I'm sure that this license fee, renewing this license fee or whatever, you know, didn't just pop up 13 days after the election, or, yeah, 13 days, because it was on November 3rd, Prop S passed. November 16th, Mr. Lee proposed, uh, putting $35,000 towards the election in April 6th, April 5th, 2016, for this purpose. Now, we didn't know about this before, we didn't know this, that it was coming up a year ahead of time, we, somebody's, somebody's fallen down on the job, man, you know, this isn't right. I look at this, it was 45, say, $45,000 what they allocated or asked for to pay for that last election. This election's going to cost the same thing, so why don't we do like Mr. Engelmeier said, put some other things on the ballot also? I mean, it's bad enough that we're going to be, we're going to be soaked twice for $45,000, since we know how much it's going to cost. And since the, uh, the election board sets how many polls are going to be open, it's up to them. Now, you, you could talk to them, and I'm sure that the, the mayor, Mr. Egan, you should have a little clout as being a council president, maybe you should request that they cut down the numbers, so we don't have to pay 35, $45,000 again, that's $90,000. How long is this, uh, this proposition, how long is this going to last? Is this going to be one year, three years, five years, or forever? I don't know, nothing was, I read, I read all the, the attachments on this, and I couldn't find anything, how, how long it will last. Can somebody tell me how long this will last? Will this have to go before the people again to be voted on, or is this going to be the last time? Anybody have any answers? Mr. Lee's usually the one that always gets my answers for me, but, uh, does anybody have anything? This is, this is a question and answer session, because I'd, I'd like to have some feedback.
I don't have any feedback for you, Mr. O'Donnell, do you have any other questions or comments?
Okay, so you don't know, you don't know if this is going to be, going to have to be done again in next year, or three years from now, or five years from now, you don't know?
I, I don't have any feedback for you. Ms. Pagano?
Yes, this is in regards to Mr. Engelmeier. Um, the committee with, uh, Mr. Jones, myself, and Mr. Siam have been working very hard on this rental property, along with the administration, our city attorney, um, our code enforcers, and there, there's quite a few. The question that you asked about the fees is being discussed, has been discussed, we are still discussing it. Hopefully, in the near future, we will come up with a solution that we feel is free, that is fair to all. So, just so you know, we are working on this.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano, do you have any other, other comments, Mr. O'Donnell?
But, but, nobody's got, got any kind of information for me?
I don't, I don't have any feedback for you.
No information from anybody? There's nine people up here, for God's sake, 10 people if I count the mayor. Mayor, do you know?
I'll get back to you.
I'd like to have an answer right now, so everybody can hear this.
We, we don't have any, we don't have any, any, I don't have any comment for you. Mr. Lee, do you have a comment?
Okay, so this is going to be $90,000 that we spent within six months for elections, how, how long is it going to take to reimburse?
Mr. Lee, do you have a comment?
How, how long is it going to take to get those $45,000?
Mr. Lee, do you have a comment?
As your question about, will this have to be gone on again, the answer is no. This is to reinstate a tax that was previously collected, the city has, every city in St. Louis County has until November of 2016 to reinstate this tax, once it's, if the voters choose to reinstate it, it'll be permanently reinstated. It's a sales tax on vehicles and items that are purchased out of state and brought into the state of Missouri. So once that's passed by the voters, if it's passed, then it would be a permanent sales tax, just like sales tax on a car that you buy from a local dealer or a state dealer, so it's a one-shot deal, yes or no?
I, I thought it had something to do with just the dealers, not just the dealers, it was protect the dealers from private sales also, is that true?
It's any vehicle that's purchased. Out of state is not subject to state sales tax under the change that the Supreme Court ruled, until the voters approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
I would really like to see this on, I would like to see Prop S on here, or maybe, you know, we could move this election up until the November primaries, when the primaries come up, or, the primaries in August, aren't they? We could do, we could do it in August, couldn't we?
All right, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, thank you very much.
It's my tax money too, Mr. Egan.
It is. I appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment on this bill? Seeing none, Clerk, will you please pull the council?
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Hinkie?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Bill 9144 passes and becomes ordinance 8190, 8190. Item number 10, new business. Item number 11, resolutions. I'll make a motion for a first reading for Resolution 984, I'm sorry, motion, Resolution 984.
A resolution in opposition to Bill Number 276, 2015, adopted by the St. Louis County Council pertaining to police services and cities.
I'll make a motion for a second reading, that is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion concerning the second reading? All in favor of a second reading? Aye. Opposed? And if you'd be so kind as to read the motion, I would ask you to read the entire motion.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Resolution number eight, 984, resolution in opposition to Bill Number 276, 2015, adopted by the St. Louis County Council pertaining to police services and cities. Whereas the city of Florissant Police Department has been recognized as one of the finest police departments in the nation, and has been certified by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, and whereas the mayor and city council have always strived to work cooperatively with St. Louis County and the St. Louis County Council. Whereas St. Louis County Council passed and approved Bill Number 276, 2015, county legislation authorizing county executive to issue minimum police standards for all municipal, municipal police departments within the city of St. Louis County. Whereas although, although the Florissant Police Department will exempt, will be exempt from submitting statements to the county executive pertaining to Florissant Police Department's minimum standards, because the Florissant Police Department is certified by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, the mayor and city council object to the proposition that the county executive has the authority to establish minimum police standards for all police departments within the St. Louis County. Whereas the mayor and city council believe that the city, that the county legislation is a challenge to the autonomy to the city of Florissant and all cities within St. Louis County. And whereas the mayor and city council also object to the provisions contained within the county legislation that provide the county executive with the power and authority to review all collaborative agreements among cities to determine whether or not such agreements are acceptable to the county executive, because this would give the county executive the power to override the city council's authority to enter into a cooperative agreement and allow the county executive to unilaterally determine whether or not such collaborative agreements promotes health, safety, and welfare of the residents. Whereas the mayor and city council also object to the county legislation, because it authorizes the county executive to investigate and determine, based on the county executive's sole discretion, to determine whether the police department, Florissant Police Department is providing deficient policing services, which is defined as an ability or unwillingness to keep the peace, to protect the public health, to provide timely or sufficient response, or to meet and confirm, or meet or conform to the Missouri police standards. And whereas the Missouri, or the mayor and the city council also object to the county's legislation, because it provides the county executive with authority to usurp the city's authority to provide police services and authorizes the city, the county executive to provide the police services within the city by St. Louis County or some other city, when the county executive determines in its, in his discretion, that the city is providing deficient policing services, or is failing to satisfy the minimum policing standards. Whereas the mayor and city council also object to the legislation purporting to provide the county executive with authority to oversee and operate police services within the city, when the county executive does not have the authority to operate the police services provided by St. Louis County. Whereas the mayor and city council attempted to provide input concerning county legislation prior to its adoption, but the county council and the county executive ignored the suggestions provided to it. And whereas the mayor and city council have authorized the city attorney to join in litigation to challenge the legality of the county legislation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the, by the council, the city of Florissant, Missouri, as follows, resolved that the city of Florissant opposes the St. Louis County Council's adoption of Bill Number 276, 2015, pertaining to police services and cities and collaborative entities, because such legislation is an attack on the autonomy of the city of Florissant and the police services that are provided by the Florissant Police Department. Further resolved that the city attorney is authorized to participate in litigation challenging the legality of the provision of Bill Number 276, 2015.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. And I ask that the clerk read that in its entirety, because it is a very important document, it's a very strongly worded document. This is not about police services, this is not about the City of Florissant's adopting standards or adhering to standards. We already do that at this Florissant Police Department. This is about our sovereign right to act as a city, to rule ourselves, to have our own sovereign police department that is unfettered by the St. Louis County Executive at his sole discretion. I very, very much support this resolution, and I think it, and I hope that sends a very strong message that, and that message is not that about services, or not about standards. We all support standards, we have those standards. It is about our sovereignty in the City of Florissant. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Egan. I want to pretty much echo what you said. I want to thank the city attorney, the chief of police, the mayor, for working to draft this resolution that I think we're gonna pass unanimously tonight. And I'm gonna reiterate what you said. I don't think any of us up here are against minimum standards for police departments. I think what we're against is the way that this has taken place. I know that the municipal league, and our mayor, and several other municipalities worked very closely, tried to work with the county executive, with the county, with the county council, and everybody to say, let's sit down, let's, let's put the brakes on, let's get together and work on something that we feel we can all live with, because we believe that police standards are a good thing. But we are against the way that our, you said sovereign municipality, the rights of our municipality. I don't, I don't think any of us feel that the county has the right to come in and do this and put these kinds, this kind of authority on, on us and the other municipalities involved. And there's been people that have asked me, and I'm sure we've all gotten the same question, why would we be against this? We are KLEA certified, we're held at the highest standard, we have a great police department, and that's true. But is this step one towards what's going to happen down the line, and trying to, trying to take, take control of this again? So, that's, in layman's terms, why, why I support this as well, strongly support it. And I understand there's gonna be many municipalities that are going to be challenging this, and I think the municipal league will be joining in as well. So, I'm very confident that we can get this turned around and not have to do the litigation, although I'm not confident that's gonna happen. So, thank you.
Mr. Lee, thank you for your comments. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Ms. President. Yes, I feel the same way as Mr. Lee, Mr. Egan does. I know this is, this is an attack on our sovereignty through a city of Florissant. Our police, as of right now, we have the best, best police force in St. Louis County, in Missouri altogether. I mean, we have a very good police, and I don't think St. Louis County should come in. If they feel that they have public safety is at risk in Florissant, they have the right to come in and take that over. I feel that is wrong on the municipalities and the democratic way of life that we, we have in this city. So, I have, I am for this resolution, and I will support it. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Caputa. Mr. Jones?
Yes, I just want to let everybody know, I am for the police standards too, and I just wish our brothers on the county council, which I have a lot of personal friends up there, could've communicated this a little bit better. I think they kinda brought the, the trailer before the horse, and we should've dealt with the horse first instead of the trailer. I'm totally for this resolution also. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And to be clear that, I'll just make sure, as Mr. Lee mentioned, we, the city council did authorize the city attorney to engage in litigation to fight this earlier this evening. Madam clerk, will you read the bill for a?
Motion for a third reading. We already read it for the second time.
Thought we did that. I'm sorry, I got wrapped up. Motion, I'll make a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Schmidt. I need a roll call vote, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Please read the bill a third time.
A resolution in opposition to bill number two-seventy-six, two thousand fifteen, adopted by the St. Louis County Council pertaining to police services and cities.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this resolution, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment?
John Engelmeier.
Hold on, let me get you up, let me get you up. Very good, go ahead.
John Engelmeier, twelve-eighty-one Graham Road. I appreciate the city council putting this resolution before and opposing this. I read the bill from St. Louis County. I think Mr. Lee explained it quite eloquently, in terms of the information and sovereignty. We do have a good police force. I testified to that last week at the special meeting. And again, our sovereignty should be sovereign. We should be separate from the county. I think that we've got a great police force. I did talk to Chief Lowery moments before this, and he will give me a better explanation of my questions that I have concerning this resolution and the bill in St. Louis County that was passed as an ordinance. Thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make comment? Your honor?
I appreciate the city council passing this. I've been very vocal up till now. Again, we are very much for standards. Our police department sets the highest standard probably in the state, maybe, especially if you judge by the testimony that we got last week, with many of you were present. So, we're certainly far standards. And we offered our, we reached our hand out to the county executive and the county council in every way we could, to try to avoid this confrontation, and it seemed like they were set on a confrontation. Sometimes that happens in a democracy, democracies, republics, things can get a little bit messy. Hopefully, we'll clean our mess up, and we'll go forward together.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that the resolution was adopted unanimously. Item number seven, board appointments. Seeing none. Item number eight, request. From Ward Six, a request for a permit for four hens for Frank and Trina Pruitt, located at six-ninety-three North Lafayette. That motion, that request is, or motion's made by Mr. Henke?
Yes. I'm very familiar with six-ninety-three, it was part of my mail route for many, many years. Bring it on.
Mr. Henke makes the motion, that is seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the request shall be granted. Another request out of Ward Number Six. Request for a transfer of special use permit number seventy-nine oh-eight from Mark Gillette DBA Mag Motors to Corey Gully DBA The Car Doctor LLC for the operation of auto repair business for the property located at eighteen-ninety North Highway sixty-seven. Mr. Henke?
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Gully on the phone, and it's just a transfer from one owner to another for another car shop going in the same location, and I wish him all the best of luck in his venture.
Motion is made by Mr. Henke to grant this request, and motion is seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion shall be granted, or the request shall be granted. Bill's for first reading. Bill number ninety-one fifty.
Ordinance amending Title III of the Florissant City Code, Schedule Eight, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets, by adding there to the west side of McNulty Drive, two-hundred feet from the intersection of Lindsay Lane.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'd like to speak on both of these during my ward. Since I've became councilman, I've had problems on both streets. The last tragic accident that the first responders were out with their fire truck, I went down there and knocked on wood that nobody parked on one side of the street that day, so that the ambulance and the fire truck could get down to the house where the child was taken from. I was lucky that day. The signs have been put out there on an emergency basis between thirty and ninety days. I'm wanting them to stay full-time. The traffic commission wanted to leave them there for three to four, which made no sense to me. If there's gonna be a problem, we don't know when the fires or emergencies are gonna happen on both of these streets. When you have cars parked on both sides at the same place, you cannot get a trash truck down, which I have numerous times on McNulty, been called saying to me, they can't get to my trash truck, they missed my trash day again, I've got trash piled up, I've had enough of this. I-
Mr. Jones, will you make a motion for a second reading? Is that where we're leading?
Yes, please.
Okay, why don't we make the motion, then we'll go through the discussion?
You betcha.
Okay, Mr. Jones makes a motion for a second reading. I'll second that motion for a second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, if you want to continue your discussion?
Okay. No, just short, the signs got put in, you guys, I went out and spoke, everybody was a little bent out of shape about them a little bit, they're not used to it. But if a fire ever happens, or is emergencies ever happen, I said it'd pay off for all of them, and they all agreed, and they're all happy that the signs are there now, and I don't think the signs should be pulled out or a time changed on them. They'll be end up getting tickets on them then, it's just gonna confuse people, not help people. Thanks.
Mayor Schneider?
Just for your information, we have a handful of streets that were developed with narrower right-ofways, and I believe these two streets are among those. And so, we don't have the ability to have the normal width of pavement that we have on all other residential streets. And so, I support Mr. Jones' concern, as far as emergency vehicles are concerned. But just so you know, this doesn't, this isn't gonna affect every street, but we do have a few where the distance from the side of the street to the other side of the street pretty much takes up the whole right-ofway that we have.
Thank you, your honor. There's a motion on floor, seconded, all in favor, a second reading? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Madam clerk, if you'll read the bill for a second time.
Ordinance amending Title III of the Florissant City Code, Schedule Eight, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets, by adding there to the west side of McNulty Drive for two-hundred feet from the intersection of Lindsay Lane.
Mr. Jones makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Roll call vote, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Read the vote, the bill for a third time.
Ordinance amending Title III of the Florissant City Code, Schedule Eight, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets, by adding there to the west side of McNulty Drive for two-hundred feet from the intersection of Lindsay Lane.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone present that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please pull the council.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Bill number ninety-one fifty-one passes and becomes ordinance eighty-one ninety-two, Bill ninety-one fifty-two.
Ordinance authorizing transfer of special use permit number seventy-nine oh-eight from Mark Gillette DBA Mag Motors to Corey Gully DBA The Car Doctor LLC for the operation of auto, auto repair business for the property located eighteen-ninety North Highway sixty-seven.
Motion for a second from Mr. Henke. Mr. Lee?
I was gonna say, if Mr. Henke wanted to have three readings and clear our agenda for the year, that would be, that would be my, all right.
I will, I will accept your, that as a second to Mr. Henke's motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Opposed?
Please read the bill for a second time.
Ordinance authorizing transfer of special use permit number seventy-nine oh-eight from Mark Gillette DBA Mag Motors to Corey Gully DBA The Car Doctor LLC for the operation of an auto repair business for the property located eighteen-ninety North Highway sixty-seven.
And Mr. Henke makes a motion for a third reading. That motion is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please, for a third reading.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Siam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroth?
Yes.
Henke?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Bill ninety-one fifty-two passes and becomes ordinance eighty-one ninety-three, eight-one-nine-three. Next item on the agenda, council announcements. Mr. Henke, you're up.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I just want to make this real quick. Wish everyone a very happy, merry holiday, Merry Christmas to you all. And it's this season, let's watch out for each other and our neighbors, and give a little extra thought to our, to people that need it in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henke, Mr. Jones.
Okay, everybody get ready, it's gonna be a long one.
Here you go, it's yours.
I'd like to give a shout-out to team, as I always do, you guys. There's always somebody hungry down the street, morning, noon, and night. Please take time to get an extra can of good, or a couple extra bucks, run it down to them people. I also want to share, when we had Santa Claus up here at City Hall, which is not too long ago, I come up and participated most of the day. And it was a sure, fine, warm day, seeing all the kids that was up here, this place was packed. A lot of the parents did ask me to reach out to our mayor, that somehow we can make this a little bigger next year, because the line was very long, and Santa was worn out. It was very nice to see, like I said, all those kids in one room. Later on that evening, I went over to Project Liftoff, and I spent the majority of the evening there with my daughter on her twelfth birthday, and some of her friends that spent the night. It was great to participate in that, to see some of our officers, our mayor, our police department, how hands-on they were, and how it does go hand-in-hand. To see some of the kids fall down, bump their knee, and to see one of our female officers help the little girl off the ice, and put a Band-Aid on her knee goes a long ways in my book. It was a very interesting night, a very learning experience. It was great to see four hundred and fifty kids, a sold-out show. I know Snyder and I think Tim Lowery snuck a couple more of them in that didn't have tickets, but I overlook that as a councilperson. But it was definitely an enjoyable night for all those kids. You guys, I think we're very fortunate to have an Egan Center that will hold that, and just a good, safe place for those kids to go and participate in. But it was a great evening. I want to wish Ward Two Merry Christmas. I want to thank my girlfriend for coming up, and the rest of the council. It's been a good year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for your heartfelt words. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Ms. President. Yes, I would like to congratulate all the police officers and detectives that were com-
I also want to share, when we had Santa Claus up here at City Hall, which is not too long ago, I come up and participated most of the day. And it was a sure fine warm day, seeing all the kids that was up here, this place was packed. A lot of the parents did ask me to reach out to our mayor that somehow we can make this a little bigger next year because the line was very long and Santa was worn out. It was very nice to see, like I said, all those kids in one room. Later on that evening, I went over to Project Liftoff, and I spent the majority of the evening there with my daughter on her 12th birthday and some of her friends that spent the night. It was great to participate in that, to see some of our officers, our mayor, our police department, how hands-on they were, and how it does go hand in hand. To see some of the kids fall down, bumped their knee, and to see one of our female officers help the little girl off the ice and put a Band-Aid on her knee goes a long ways in my book. It was a very interesting night, a very learning experience. It was great to see 450 kids, a sold-out show. I know Snyder and I think Tim Lowery snuck a couple more of them in that didn't have tickets, but I overlook that as a councilperson, but it was definitely an enjoyable night for all those kids. You guys, I think we're very fortunate to have an Egan Center that will hold that and just a good, safe place for those kids to go and participate in, but it was a great evening. I want to wish Ward Two Merry Christmas. I want to thank my girlfriend for coming up, and the rest of the council. It's been a good year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for your heartfelt words. Mr. Caputa?
Thank you, Ms. President. Yes, I would like to congratulate all the police officers and detectives that were accommodated tonight. That goes to show you what kind of police force we do have in this city. And also, I would like to congratulate Nagles. Nagles had a very well-attended Christmas event. Over Saturday, they had it, they had a reindeer there, Santa Claus, and a few of the superheroes were there, and it was very successful. There was a lot of people that came by Nagles Saturday. And also Eddie was there, Eddie was very good, had some pictures taken with Eddie the dog, so it was a very successful afternoon in Nagles Parking Lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Mr. Shildroth?
Thank you, Mr. President. For those of you that don't know, the city of Florissant has a dog park, and it's located in Ward Five. And for 2016, the, the prices have been reduced for membership, for resident, it's $5 for the full year, and non-resident it's 10. And if you need any other information on it, you can call the Egan Center at 921-4466, or JFK Center at 921-4250. And I would like to wish the residents of the city of Florissant a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shildroth. Mr. Lee, you're up.
Mr. Shildroth, did you just have a special event in the past couple of weeks, an anniversary or something? Congratulations on, for you and Mary for your anniversary, so. And Mr. Jones, I talked to Santa, and you're wired, you're good, don't worry about him. You're, he's been taken care of this year.
He's off the naughty list.
Then he's been good this year. On behalf of myself and my family, I wanted to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a safe and healthy new year. I also ask everybody, please keep in mind our servicemen and women that, that are there keeping us safe and won't be able to be with their families this year. This has been a really good year for the city council and for, this is my 13th year, and I just have to say going into this year, we had a lot of challenges, we had a lot of disagreements, but I'm very, very happy that this council has really pulled together and worked so well together with the mayor, with the administration, everything, and I just really feel like we're blessed for that. So, again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And don't think you're getting off so early because we're going to do council Christmas greetings afterwards. I, I encourage you all to stick around for Ms. Pagano's. Mr. Schmidt, you're up. You can do it, we'll do this as a warm-up. Mr. Schmidt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. No, I'd just like to take this time to, to wish all our employees, as well as our residents, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. It looks like this next new year is going to be a very, very prosperous one. I know we're working in construction trades, it's my normal job, and we are just swamped, and jobs look good for at least the next couple of years, so it should be a very nice year for the rest of us in St. Louis hopefully as well. So, again, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Ms. Pagano?
The moment you've all been waiting for. I would just like to wish you all a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Pagano. I'm going to echo what Mr. Jones said, and if you, if I just sat back and looked from the Fourth of July on, the amount of events that I've been able to attend in the city, Harvest Fest and, and the Race the Shrine and Old Town in Florissant, and, and the lighting of the tree, we really have a special city here, and as the mayor has said on numerous occasions, we just like to get together, and it is really good to be together as a community on these different events as we go on through the year. I guess the next big one we'll have will be the New Year's Eve Dance. I'm not going to take your thunder, I know you're going to talk about the New Year's Eve Dance, and I'm sure you'll have some celebrity bartenders there. At any rate, I do also want to wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas, and again, I encourage you to stick around for the official, the official Christmas greetings for the council. Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. And you're right, New Year's Eve, I hope that all of you can attend as bartenders, if possible, it's, it's a lot of fun. We even made the Jay Leno Show one year, and it's a countdown at noon for our seniors, and they really enjoy having a council there, you know, just helping, helping to celebrate the new year. And speaking of celebrating, one of our, one of our businesses was so inspired by the